Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can all please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members, please. Thank you. May be seated. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Wallace. Councilmember Soto.
Present.
Mayor Protem Samra.
Present.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
For the record, all councilmembers, Mayor Protem and Mayor Moran are all present.
Thank you. Close session announcements.
No reportable action at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have our changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Here and now, moving forward. Next, we have citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the City Council on any item not on the agenda. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the City Council this evening. Is there any citizen comments for any items not on the agenda? Anyone on the phone? Here and now, anyone in the chamber, please come forward. Hearing none. Anyone in the chamber? Please come forward.
Hello, Mayor Moran and council members. My name is Alexandra Riza, and I'm here on behalf of Assemblywoman Esmeralda Soria. I'm here to announce and promote a community resource fair that we'll be hosting on July twenty-sixth from five PM to eight PM here in the city of Livingston. This resource fair is dedicated to all the citizens and community members of the city of Livingston. We'll be hosting many different booths and vendors here that will be promoting all the way from health and wellness, health organizations alongside educational resources for the citizens of Livingston. It will be hosted at the Max Fosters Complex, Sports Complex here, and we would like to promote and allow for everyone in the community to come and receive these resources. I have a pamphlet and a lot of different brochures that I will be setting in the back of it as allowed for the citizens to come and grab some pamphlets and, you know, for the city of Livingston to be able to announce. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen comments in the chamber? Seeing none, bringing it back to the dais and closing citizen comments at seven twenty-seven. Next, we have any announcements or reports, city staff, announcements or reports?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Any city manager announcements or reports?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Next, we have city council members announcements or reports. Mr. Wallace?
Yeah, I attended Atwater County City Dinner, and I was quite surprised that MCAG passed out a pamphlet talking about their train station for ACE, and that caught me by surprise. I had a meeting with Chris, the city manager, and let him dig into that if he has some explanations on that, because my understanding was the train was going to be here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Just an update to Mr. Wallace. I didn't get a chance to get everybody update. The way it's set up right now, Livingston is guaranteed to stop. We're going through the environmental, we're going through the process. Livingston is still on track to get it. It hasn't moved to Atwater. Now, what may happen is Livingston will get it. They may get one too, but however, Livingston is still slated to keep its. Of course, we're not gonna back off. We're gonna make sure. The MCAG, I believe, is forging a committee, and I would highly encourage that we participate just to make sure, because even if that's what they're saying, that's what I've been told, and I talked to MCAG directly, we don't know what political wind or EIR or whatever can change tomorrow. So when we come forward, we need to make sure we're heavily involved in the committee through staff level and at the political level.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Anything else, Mr. Wallace?
No.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Roth.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The only thing I did so far in the city was I went to the Fourth of July celebration. It was pretty nice. Had a great time, saw a lot of people, talked to a lot of people. Only got to be there one day, unfortunately, but great job for everyone who put it on, and can't wait till next year.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember Soto.
Thank you. One, I was selected to participate in the city audit through a phone interview. I also spoke with Paul Maurer of Paul Maurer Show. He is the carnival owner and operator. He did have great things to say upon his return back to Livingston. He's really pleased with the outcome of the response from residents of Livingston, all those that supported the carnival, and he is in hopes of continuing a contract, so that I will bring that again at the end for a discussion later on the agenda. Lafco is set to be this Thursday. I'll probably participate via Zoom. I also want to announce that the Merced Hispanic Chamber of Commerce will have its downtown Mercado this Thursday, the eighteenth, from six to nine PM. It is in honor of, well, one, let me back that up. It was scheduled for last Thursday. We typically have it on the first Thursday. The first Thursday was Independence Day. The following Thursday was a hundred and fourteen degrees, therefore, we postponed it to this coming Thursday. And it is a tribute to our military members and veterans, also to our first responders, so I encourage the community to come out and support and celebrate the veterans and our first responders there. Also, I know that's part of the report, but I wanted to ask her, Paul. You mentioned that it was a guarantee for the ACE train. However, you backed that up with, we still need to advocate. Can you clarify? Is it in writing?
Of course. We don't have anything in writing, but originally, as everybody may recall, I know you would, of course, you know, you were at the time. They are going through the environmental impact and all that. Livingston is slated still. Atwater has always been an alternate site in case of something goes wrong here in Livingston. I know, but they have been advocating, can they also get one? And that's what they're evaluating. Not take one from Livingston, can they also get one of their own? So that, but then, I'm not confident enough to say, hey, you know, we're gonna do it, and, you know, they may get it, we may get it. We just need to be very vigilant just to make sure. Livingston gets it. If Atwater gets it, but as long as Livingston has it, I don't have less of a problem with that, then Livingston not having it than Atwater getting it, that is not right. That's why I spoke with MCAG this morning regarding that, and that was the explanation that was given to me. I do have a MCAG meeting Thursday. I will get further clarification, and also, I'm not sure how this will work, but I don't know if they're gonna allow jurisdictions to appoint somebody to whatever they're gonna propose, that we definitely participate, because I had mentioned to the director, executive director, that everybody that's on it to be slated should be on the commission or committee, whatever you want to call it. Livingston's on it, Merced's on it, they should be, you know, of course, and Atwater, if they're since they are alternate, well, they need to be on it, but everybody that has earmarked should be on there. It's not just the ACE train, it's the other trains as well, so it's more than just one piece. And that's what it was, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. No, got it?
Just one more thing, I'm sorry. I did miss the first meeting of the month. However, I later that evening, I did watch. I just wanted to mention that the discussion in regards to the city clerk position and the city treasurer, I heard the discussion. I have to go back and review, because it's already slipped my mind. I should be prepared, but I just wanted to mention this. We still do not have an accounting of our minutes for a very, very long time, so I know that this is a responsibility that falls under a city clerk, and I know that I have been one to advocate for the positions from being elected. So again, I know that was a conversation that was held on the dais, but I will come back and I will have further comment, but I do know that it's been advocated, and I know that I had been the one. I know that it was said that we need to be cognizant of, and these aren't verbatim, but we need to be aware of the persons that come and apply. However, that was not a case a year ago when an appointment was made. There was a qualified applicant. However, the members of, three members of this council went a different way without respect to what was currently said in the meeting. So we need to stick with the qualifications and the responsibilities and hold people accountable, and I am holding this council accountable for the appointment that they did make, because the duties are still not being fulfilled.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I just want to make a statement about something that I was shocked and saddened by what happened at a rally for presidential candidate, Mr. Trump, former President Trump. We, as a nation, have different views, different ideologies. We can agree or disagree with each other, be neighbors, and, but nowhere is it right or should that political violence or any type of violence should be the endpoint to a political point. It should not be. Any type of violence, be it a candidate for president or anybody, is just plain wrong. I just hope that the leaders up at the parties and others and and our media, everybody would kind of learn to where the hyper-partisanship needs to subdue, go away, and that this was just wrong, and it was very sad to see our country go into this. So on another note, change, huh? Yeah. And on the other one, July fourth, July fifth, sixth, and I had a blast. I took my littlest one. She'll kiss, change her mind on everything. Originally, we were gonna get cotton candy. We got there, she wanted snow cones, but it's okay. We got to do little rides. I had to, it's kind of scratched down little rides that don't even fit me, you know, and my big belly sticking out over the half of it, you know, and, because it wasn't a rider by herself, but nevertheless, it was fun, and I truly enjoyed it. Fireworks were excellent. I truly want to thank our employees that were out there in a hundred and ten plus, whatever, and everybody, Jackie was there, everybody that helped to put this together. Can't always say how well they do every year, and they never let us down, from the Fourth of July committee to the employees, to everybody. Thank you very much. Our folks deserved it, and thanks to you guys, they had it. And as far as I had a, as we all know, on my other one, I attended the mosquito abatement meeting today. I had a busy day. As we know, now that the weather is warm and we didn't notice too many mosquitoes, because I think it was too hot for us to be out in the evenings, but mosquitoes are out there now. I have proof right here. I think these mosquitoes started a war with me. How dare they bite somebody that's on the mosquito abatement board? I'm gonna take my revenge. I will take my revenge to the people, and maybe we can put a link on it. If folks see mosquitoes, please go on their website, put in your address, or better yet, I hate to volunteer our staff for it, but call the city hall and say, hey, I got mosquitoes. Or give me a call. I can do the same thing. I can just call them and say, hey, let's spray these folks, you know, look at that spray the mosquitoes. And right now, we have three cases in Merced County, West Nile, on birds only. No humans, just birds. It is lower than last year, but I hope people will find out and learn. Any standing water, dump it. I know we don't want to waste water, but mosquito is worse, so watch everything, clean up whatever standing water, and let us know what we can do to help. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, I just want to report on, you know, well, first of all, I want to say thank you to all of the different departments that in one way or another participated to make the Fourth of July event, you know. A lot of times, people don't understand or have an idea how much work it takes to put up something like that, you know, from all the different departments, you know. Public Works PD was out there, Fire Department was there, the volunteers for the Fire Department were there. And I know that, you know, I was there all three days. On Sunday, I was kind of just around, and I stopped one time, I think it was around two o'clock or something like that. It was pretty hot, you know, and there were Public Works employees already out there assisting with a couple of different things that needed it to be done. But, you know, recreation, there was a lot of people involved in really getting that event going. And a lot of times, they don't it's hard to see all of the man hours that go into getting something like this program, deal with the different issues that come up every day on the minute, on the hour. But I just want to say thank you to everyone that was involved, and just be, there was a lot of good comments from different people that were there, that attended, and for the feedback that was provided, you know, just different things that could be improved on, and hopefully, those things are improved for next year, just to make it bigger and better. So, thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda items. We have, actually, I would like to have a separate discussion on item number five. Is there, right now, we have in the consent agenda items, we have one, two, three, and four. Like I said, I do want to pull item number five and have a separate discussion. Is there anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have discussion on item number four, please.
Number four?
Yeah, I should have asked a question. My apologies. It's been.
Or do you want to have a separate discussion or just ask the question and?
Well, I'll just pull it for discussion, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number four, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we have, we have one, two, and three left.
I'll be a spokesperson for one and two.
Okay, so one and two. So just pull them separately, or you want to ask the questions and then keep them in consent agenda?
I'll just ask my questions.
Okay. Anybody else? So, go ahead for the questions on one and two, please.
This isn't on consent, but I just want to point out that Supervisor Rodrigo Espinoza is not here. It's an agenda item, so I just want to make sure that we acknowledge that as part of the agenda. Item number one, ratifying check warrants. Going through this, I did notice, and this is for you, Mayor Moran, there are warrants written out in the amount of over twelve hundred dollars. If you could share with the public what those were for? Because I don't remember any conferences being held that there would be an expense to the city.
Sure. There was one for like two hundred dollars. I forgot the exact amount. That's a reimbursement for mileage on going to a couple of different meetings. There were, you know, I didn't turn them in like right away, so they just accumulated. Those are just mileage reimbursements. And the one for a thousand dollars, or I believe it is, and some change, that was a reimbursement for receipts turned in for expenses for the Sister Cities event that I didn't get to cover with the city credit card. So for those were just receipts that I turned in for reimbursement as well.
I was unaware of the fact that we could well, maybe that, so mileage from to and from different meetings that you attend on behalf of the city, and then for Sister Cities, does that come out of the Sister City budget? Thank you.
I do believe so, yes.
Thank you. That's all.
Do you also have a question for item number two?
Item number two, I'm not sure if that's a question, but I did notice that the staff report was prepared by Jesus Chavez. It does signify. It does signify that he's the water wastewater manager. I did not realize that there was a promotion there. Can you, because I don't remember this being a...
The title seemed to ask here? We're getting into some personal matter.
Hear me now? Yeah, so the city recruited for the water...
Yeah, go ahead, please. There may be a personal matter, we may need to hold on.
I just stated that I was not aware that a person had been hired for the water wastewater manager position.
Yeah, the Public Works Department recruited for the approved position that was budgeted for during the last fiscal year, approximately six months ago. Put out a recruitment, and that position was filled by Mr. Jesus Chavez. It was an open position that we recruited for.
All the qualifications were being met?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we do have item one, two, and three in the consent agenda. Are there any additional questions in regards to those three items? Are there any motions?
If there are no further questions, Mr. Mayor, I made the motion to approve consent items one, two, and three.
Thank you, so we have a motion for the consent agenda by Mayor Protem Samra. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Roth. Roll call, please. Hold on, hold on, let me go off for public comment. Well, I think, well, let me just go back again. Is there any public comment in regards to the consent agenda items? One, two, and three? Anyone on the phone? Hearing none, coming back to the chamber, is there any public comment in regards to item one, two, and three in the chamber? Seeing none, bringing it back to the dais at 7:48. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. So next, we have item number four, consideration, so this is discussion and potential action items. Item number four, consideration of a resolution approving amendment number one to an employee agreement between the City of Livingston and Anthony Chavera. Staff recommendation, approve resolution. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and my apologies to the city manager, you didn't get a chance to ask that question, so Roy. I don't, I didn't even realize within the COLA, I guess the city kind of lucked out for a little bit, but, okay. You know, having a contract without COLAs has his own problems, and I understand that, and I don't have a problem with that, but some of the questions that I have is, it says that any or future increases salary schedule must be approved. Does that also include COLAs or just the increase in steps and so, how is that? Can you clarify what, exactly what that would be?
Yeah, so even with negotiated MOUs, the council still needs to approve revised salary schedules, and that includes all positions in the City of Livingston per its personnel policies. So even if a COLA was afforded via an MOU, or in this case, an agreement, the council would still need to adopt a salary schedule for the City of Livingston.
Yeah, unfortunately, I didn't have the contract with me to read, so that's, and then, and item number two, that the city manager is authorized to approve any other modifications, just what other modification can they be approved, and if the modifications are made, will they still come to the council, or how would that happen? I mean, what modification can be made under the line item two?
So in this instance, since the council approved this agreement previously, the city manager's office was unable to make any adjustments to this contract. As a result of this COLA, I couldn't unilaterally amend that contract with it, without it coming back to the council. So if there were a future modification, let's say, a term of the agreement, or other things like that, extending the terms of the agreement, that would essentially be allowable for the city manager to take on. With that being said, it would have to be in concurrence with the employee.
Would that also, would this be concurrent with the employee and the city manager, or would it also come to the council? Because if we have the contract approved, would the modifications also be changing to what we, or are you saying that by allowing this, we're giving the authorization to change it?
That's correct.
Would that also be termination of the contract also be there, too?
For terminating a contract, I don't, you know, that is probably something that Roy can probably chime in on. I'm not really, you know, that's more of a legal question.
So generally, employment contracts and termination of employment contracts don't come back to council for approval. They're done pursuant to work with HR and usually city legal, based on the requirements of both personnel rules and procedures and the subsequent contract and any amendments that are within the contract.
So if the city council approved the contract, and I know there, there's three contracts, maybe four, but I know there's three for sure, city manager, the chief of police, and Public Works are the contracts that, if we're approving them, how does that, termination of it not come into the city council?
So generally, the, in a situation like the City of Livingston has, where you have a city manager form of government, the city manager has ultimate higher fire authority over all city employees. So it's unclear why the Public Works contract originally came to council for approval. I'm not sure I wasn't the legal advisor at the time, or even the chief of police agreement. I'd have to look back at the, at the process and why that came forward. However, the city manager and the city attorney are the two individuals that answer directly to the city council. So any agreements relating to us would always come to the council for improvement, and any sort of modifications, termination.
Yeah, those I am very clear on, of course, but as far as the, the chief and now Public Works Director, I was just kind of curious, and so now, of course, any contract, I don't want to point out any particular one, chief, city, Public Works Director, or whatever, employees still have their rights under whatever for grievance and whatever they have, or for the lack of a better word, you know, I'm not, try to be careful what I say.
Correct, so as I kind of mentioned a little bit earlier, different, different level of, different levels of employees will have different provisions within their contracts, if they have contracts, not all employees do. Some employees, they're governed by the MOUs that are negotiated between their representatives in the city, and any sort of termination of an employee or any sort of change in working conditions are usually negotiated and met and conferred on pursuant to the terms of the MOU. Any sort of discipline that can result is always based on the combination of reading both the municipal code, the, any adopted policies and procedures, and the MOU. Those usually give you your guiding, guiding principles on how an employee can be subject to discipline, their rights for appeal, and those procedures. If you have an at-will contract, usually, depending on how the contract is written, most of the termination language will be included in the contract. Sometimes it may incorporate the policies and procedures, manual of the city, or another MOU. It just depends, there's a, there's a number of variations.
Yeah, the reason is, and I'm not an HR expert, I think we got a, well, she's gone now, but our in-house HR and, of course, we got our city manager and legal is a employee, a non-employee contract that will employ, basically, everybody's at-will. You know, say, I hate to use a position, say, a employee worked in a widget department making widgets, I'm just using an example, is a employee that's hired through HR process, there are no contracts to be approved by anybody other than employment agreement. On the contracts, okay, on the employment, if there are parts of the union, they have grievance, they can go to, you know, of course, they can appeal the decision, HR, whatever, and go up to city manager, and then, of course, they can go with their bargaining groups, if that's what it comes, and, you know, how did this happen if there's a disagreement on termination of the contract, or any contract?
Typically, it's going to be laid out in the terms of the agreement, so it could either be, if the agreement has a provision that requires arbitration or mediation, it could be resolved that way. If it doesn't, it could be, you know, simply a, resolved by resorting to, you know, the superior court. It just, it depends on the agreement, so each agreement is different on, on what your level of appeal or your appeal rights could be.
Yeah, the only reason I'm asking this is because I know I could have just picked up the phone and, but I wasn't able to do that, and I don't have the contract in front of me, so is this under arbitration? How was this contract? Does anybody know?
That I don't know, I'd have to look back at Anthony's original contract. I don't recall if it has arbitration clause or not.
Mr. Lopez, would you happen to know if it has arbitration clause in it?
Typically, in most employment agreements that I've seen, this agreement was actually approved the same night that my interim city manager agreement was approved. Typically, with at-will employees, you know, termination, let's just say, not for cause, there is usually language that says that an employee is entitled to a certain amount of severance in exchange for the signing of a waiver of liability.
Yeah, the reason is, because I remember when we brought you onboard and the thing, and it was kind of like a blur almost, you know, because of all these things happening, and so, so and again, is there a, if an employee feels that I want to appeal the process, what is a process for that employee if need be?
It varies by MOU, so I'd have to look at each, each MOU, because they may be slightly different on what the procedures are for appealing or grieving a, a issue related to the working conditions, or a termination, or something like that. It's usually specified in the MOU and the policies and procedures manual.
Mr. Lopez, was this contract, or this item discussed amongst the, the city manager and the person's contract? Was there a discussion amongst yourselves?
Yeah, I think the, and Anthony, I'm sure he can chime in if he would like to. This was a request that the employee made many months ago, and so this was the reason why it's before the council.
Okay, yeah, I'm not, I would just, you're the one we go to, you know, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't just once, you know, somebody, one person said, the other one person didn't agree to the modifications or request, so...
I also spoke with Mr. Chavera, too, regarding the amendment.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, the amendment and the resolution, to ensure that it was clear what was being presented to council and the nature of the agreement, and that it was a mutual agreement.
Would it be appropriate if I were to ask him if he's in agreement?
There, I mean, there's nothing, yeah, there's nothing legally prohibiting asking that, yeah.
No, because this is a contract, but still, well, no, he doesn't work directly for the council, you two, but he doesn't, so that's why I was kind of careful not bringing that question up.
Yeah, there wouldn't be anything legally prohibiting you from asking if Anthony is amenable to the adoption of item four.
Anthony, you heard the, and again, I apologize to everybody, I didn't get a chance to speak to anybody, so...
Yes, I'm okay, as what's written today, as far as the modification.
Good, perfect. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to go off for public comment. Is there any public comment in regards to item number four? Anyone on the phone? Hearing none, I'm bringing it back to the chamber. Any public comment in the chamber in regards to item number four? Seeing none, bringing it back to the dais at 8:02. Any other questions, comments, suggestions, motions?
Just one more question. I know that this is the second time around with your employment with the City of Livingston. Was this, was this also something that had occurred in your previous agreement? Were you not receiving the cost of living adjustment?
See, Anthony, I'm making you walk back and forth.
We're out the battery here. Yes, Ms. Soto, previously, in my previous contract, as serving as Public Works Director, in the previous capacity, previous contract, I was afforded a COLA that was tied to mid-management. Whatever COLA they received at that time, my position received it as well.
So you did receive...
The last time I was here, yes, the first, during my first contract.
In your first contract, so this was the oversight to us?
Any other questions, motions? I'll second that, or is, has there been a first?
I will happily make the motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. So next item is item number five, consideration of a resolution authorizing interim city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Bob Murray and Associates for City Manager Recruiting Services. Staff recommendation is approve resolution. So, you know, and so the reason that I pulled this item from consent agenda, I was, you know, analyzing, you know, I was reading the report, and in the, in the report, the timeframe that it's given from, if, if this is approved tonight, it would take about, roughly about four months before is, before council is able to make a decision on, on to appoint, hire a final candidate, right? So it's four months, four months from today, or from when this becomes effective, if, if approved tonight, would be roughly mid-November. Considering that, you know, elections will be the first week of November, so then roughly a week later, or, or during the second meeting in November, council might have a consideration to possibly, if everything goes on a timely manner, which most of the time it doesn't, but if it does, then a, one, a, a final, or finalist, or a final candidate for city manager would be considered at that time. And if this process does not go on a timely manner, because normally things never do, then it can probably go into January, into the new council. then it can probably go into January, into the new council, whatever the council looks like. And then, let's say that the new council says, you know, well, we don't like what we have in front of us. So, one, all of that work, I mean, not that it was done in vain, but it would have to be started all over again, or whatever the new council decides. So that's one thing. Another thing that I was looking at and analyzing was, okay, so let's say that this council approves this item tonight, and then they start the process of recruiting and, and looking to see who potential candidates might be, there's always that risk of a potential good candidate that might not want to risk and take, take, take the risk of saying, well, you know, the City of Livingston doesn't really like their city managers that much, because they get rid of them every year, or year and a half. What would it be like if I was to apply as a candidate for a city manager position? Maybe I'll hold on, you know. So I'm thinking, how many of those good, real good candidates? I'm not saying that we're not potentially going to have any candidates, but how many of those additional good candidates could we potentially not attract in that pool, to have the best of the best, best? And so, and then, and then to think that even if, let's say that this council hires someone for that position, the new council that comes in cannot legally, even if they don't like the new city manager, they cannot legally get rid of the city manager. They have to wait 90 days, right? And then, the new city manager that has a signed contract, if the new council decides that they want to go in a different route and look for another city manager, they still either have to pay the, what's that?
Severance.
Severance pay, you know. So it, those are some of the things that I hadn't thought about before, that, you know, in reviewing the contract, I was thinking of the timeframe. So those are just additional risks that I wanted to share with the council, to wait, you know, everything that we have before us. And personally, I don't think I would be against waiting and putting this on hold until that new council comes onboard and they can decide what to do, to make sure that, that we don't, that this council, or that a council does not keep on going through the same process over and over again, one more time. And once that council comes onboard and, whatever the makeup is, and, you know, and they can start the process. You know, if they decide to go with this current, previously, agency, then they can do that. I mean, and then, in a way, the worst, I mean, the one thing that, the only other thing that could happen is that the city would have spent $30,000, or $33,000, I think it is, to go through the process and just have, to potentially run the risk of not getting the best pool of candidates because of the history, the history of the city. And I just want us, or the council, or the city to be, to be able to have the opportunity to have the best pool of possible candidates to apply to this position. So just a few things that I wanted to bring up to council, and I wanted to share. See what you guys think, and if not, so we can continue moving forward with this discussion. But those are just some of the items. One, the risk of not having a complete pool of good, great, and the best candidates apply for a position within the City of Livingston. And two, that the incoming council potentially could, could not be satisfied with, with the decision, and then have to go through the process again.
So to your point, I do believe back in March, and even before that, I was making the point of the amount of time that this would take. We're not saying that we're going to spend the $33,000 on approving this tonight, $33,000 on approving this tonight. We've already spent nearly $30,000 because we had to go out for RFP. There were other processes involved. There were many man-hours put into this. There were many hours put on the dais to discuss this item of recruitment for a city manager. Mr. Lopez has been with us for a year and a half already. We've done one evaluation, whereas we are pretty much satisfied with the work that he has done thus far. And yet, this council, with the exception of me, insists on putting out for recruitment. I did say at a council meeting that the timeline, I did ask about that timeline way back in March, because it would have fell that the RFP would come out about August, and I did make the comment that this is highly suspicious and a political move. Now, we're going to put our politics back into it, because it is an election year. I do understand that it should be up to a new council, because the makeup is going to change, if there is a selection of a different city manager. So this was brought before you from me, and I've stated it several times. And I even pointed out that with, with the selection that was made, was that this was all voted on with three members of this council, following the research that you did on this particular firm. The whole, are we going to pay more and get less, or we pay less, and not end up with this? All of that was brought into a conversation that I had on the dais. And so now, not to waste any more of our time, and this was under a consent agenda, so I believe three of us were going to pull it, because I was going to as well. But yes, that timeline was pretty much obvious from the start. So I'm glad it was removed, and I hope that this council looks at this item number five and realizes that this is going to need other opinions when a new council is formed, because the timeline does hit this come August for a new, new firm to scout for one, which takes up money, attorney's hours, our hours, the public hours, again, a waste of time, if you ask me, so... I'm glad that I, number five came up, so if it's taken off the agenda, I'm perfectly fine with that.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. This council, with the exception of Mr. Wallace, who just came on a couple of weeks ago, even, even, we came in with a big mess as far as city managers and all that. In order to, for whatever reason, because we didn't have a city manager, because the way things happened, we did a temporary interim recruitment that was be, was supposed to be for approximately six months. I think we all recall that. This is for six months, guys. We're going to come and take care of this. We're going to go through that. I'm not going to play any blame games. We're all equally responsible. We could have done this last year. For whatever reason, we didn't. And we've been talking about city manager recruitment for six months, if not longer. There was indication made by some that we need to go through the recruitment process. For whatever reason, things just slow walked into this process. Even now, it wouldn't have been on it tonight if someone didn't probably light fire under, somebody says, where in the hell is it? It seems like there was a, I don't want to say deliberate, but calculated plan to delay this process, so we can run into this. This council, last year, in January, around there, through the process of three months, whatever, went through and hired a city manager. Now, I am very familiar with that city managers cannot be terminated within 90 days of a council member, council members being sworn in, termination. I would like to find out, where does it say that we can recruit somebody? We're not talking about termination. We're talking about recruiting somebody. If we're going through the process, candidates apply. Maybe we get it done, maybe not. But I remember, even previously, when we went through city manager recruitments and others, and the candidates were not to the liking of the council, they said, we reject all candidates. Went to this recruitment firm, says, get us a new list. I believe that is, has happened before. It can happen. You're not going to spend more money. It's just that they will go out, do another recruitment, and the future councilman, if they're not happy, or this, we're not done with the decision, it can be made. It is, and again, I got legal right here. It is a termination, not a hiring, because if he couldn't hire a city manager, then we broke a law last January. We can't do that. So I reject the analysis that we can't make a decision 90 days after the election. So we delaying it and delaying it. Mr. Lopez has done a good job. I'm not, I'm not going to deny anything. I don't have a problem with a lot of things. But we also look foolish in having a interim city manager for almost two years, too. That also reflects bad on this council that we can't get our sorry-ass hinnies together to do a proper recruitment. I think we need to be above and board. It's, it's not political. Hiring a city manager is not a political. It has to be done. That's the responsibility of this council. And I think, I hope, and I'm only 20%, that we move forward with this process. Because we're going through, having stable management, it is good. And therefore, I strongly recommend listening to everybody, having moved forward with this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Wallace.
With respect to what you said about good people applying with the timeline, and I brought it up with the city manager myself, and had questions, and I actually had to call the attorney on it, to make sure I understood what the law said. And the people that are going to apply now are going to be the same people that will probably apply if we delay it. With this timeframe, I don't see this council getting it done with the history of it and making a decision. Now, then there was the mention also, so my feeling is it would go forward. And then there was the mention of the 90 can't fire somebody 90 days before, before a general election, pardon me. However, the interim city manager's contract is what takes precedence in this manner. So if the city attorney, you can address that for everybody to know that we're on the same page, please.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Wallace. Yeah, in this case, the termination of the interim city manager wouldn't be affected by, in the same way that a permanent city manager's position is affected under the government code. Because it's inherent in, in the status as interim, that it's expected for that position to be temporary. So the dictates of the employment contract would determine how that, that contract is resolved, and when it can be resolved, and in what manner it could be resolved. Whether, you know, like I said, it, it's mutually dissolved, or whether there's a termination for cause, or a termination without cause, whatever it may be, it's going to be dictated by that agreement.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Me personally, I do not have a problem with Christopher. I think he's done a good job with what he's done with the city, looking at our infrastructure and other things to that effect. But I also would like to also go forward on this. We already have spent the man-hours, the time, the dais time. And also, Christopher's welcome to apply again. So, you know, we'll see, we'll see what happens. But I am for this right now.
Thank you. And just for clarification, when I mentioned the 90 days, that was more specifically to, to, in reference, not necessarily to anyone in the interim position, but rather to someone being hired full-time in the city manager position. I do understand that, that the current contract of the interim city manager states that there is a five-day, five-day notification from either or. And, but one of my main concerns was the quality or the number of the pool of candidates that would apply. I do believe that we would have a pool of candidates either way. But what I'm more concerned is to make sure that we have, or that the city has, the best, and even more, a bigger pool of candidates. You know, if this was done after the election, thinking of, I'm just putting myself, like I said, maybe this was not understood, putting myself in, in a candidate that is going to consider applying, you know, that is all. I mean, it's, it's, I'm, I'm pretty sure that we're going to have some kind of pool of candidates, whether it's five, 10, or 15, versus having more people interested in applying. You know, and, and actually, right now, what I noticed, and then the reason this came up, was because I've been noticing on, I do get updates on, and I'm sure some of you guys do too, updates and reports of how many other cities in California are looking for city manager candidates, because this was not the same two years ago, or three years ago. For some reason, it just seems like there's a bigger, there's more people looking for city managers nowadays. So, you know, I, I spoke with a couple of, couple of people from some of those other cities, and, you know, just, and that's how, this is one of the things that came up, and one of those conversations was, we did get a pool of eight candidates for this one position, but it was not the best, because of, you know, this one particular city had been going through some difficulties themselves, and so they were not attracting the desired candidates that they wished they had. And, and they're still looking, you know. So, and this kind of made me think about, you know, someone from the outside coming in, or looking in into the City of Livingston. I'm not saying that, the, once again, I'm not saying that we wouldn't get any candidates, but just the, just the number of, that this council might have to choose from might not be enough, or what we, what we hoped for. And then, yes, you know, this, this council would always have that option of saying, no, we don't... would always have that option of saying, no, we don't, you know, we don't, we wish to continue looking, and that has happened in the past, this, you know, it's, so it's not something that I haven't looked at or considered, I mean, it's, it's, it's happened before, for two other positions, or three, you know, we just did not get a good pool of candidates, that is primarily what I'm looking at, that's it, and I just wanted to have the opportunity to, to, to share it, I, I wouldn't, you know, even knowing with the additional information that I got, you know, I just thought it would have been appropriate to share that additional information, that's it. You know, whether, whether anybody wants to take it one way or the other, well, that's, that's what opinions are for, I mean, that's it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I understand what you said, to wait for after the general election, so we are about four, five months into the end of the year, so say that we say, you know what, let's wait till the new election. Well, the new council sits, it's gonna take them three, four months, maybe whatever, to figure things out, then they do a recruitment process, gonna take four or five months, now you're still talking a year and a half away under a sit interim city manager, you know, it, process will never end, and so I think we just need to at least get the bar rolling for us or the future council.
Perhaps the new council will offer the interim a full-time contract.
And if the interim city manager applies and they like it, great, or if the interim city manager applies and we like it, the best candidate, yeah, the result doesn't change. So I don't buy that argument.
I'm not arguing, I'm just stating something that is a possibility, because we are looking at going out for recruitment for a person that, that possibly does not know Livingston. And the time that I've been here, there has been a transition three times, four times, okay, with Christopher being almost the, I wanna say almost, the second long-term city manager that I have had the, had to work, that I work with. So, with that being said, with the amount of transitions that we are having, his familiarity with many of the concerns and issues that Livingston is facing now, Christopher does, Mr. Lopez, Mr. Lopez does have a grasp on what Livingston is going through as we speak. So another transition, and again, what I heard you say was that outsiders looking in are looking at us, oh, they've got an interim for almost two years, what's wrong? I, and I cannot say with certainty, anything is wrong, because what I've heard from most of the council here was that Christopher's doing a good job, Christopher's doing a good job, so be that it, what it may, I am looking at this as another transition, as to, oh my gosh, look at the city council, they're doing this again, they're going out for another city manager, what's wrong, what's happening, another transition in the midst of certain issues that the city of Livingston is facing. So, that's to the point that I wanna make, it's another transition we're gonna face, and we have a city manage, city manager that is currently taking many of these items on and going to bat for us at different levels of county government, we're even gonna be looking at attending MCAG meetings because of other things that may be coming up, so again, he's been fighting and advocating for Livingston, that's what I do see in our current interim.
Thank you, but I'd beg to differ that we have a potential of a three-member change in November. There are three seats up, there's a potential for a majority change, I'm not saying it can happen, so, and when Mr. Lopez came in January, other than having Googled Livingston, he didn't know who we were, or what we were, and he did an admirable job in learning who we are, I'm not taking that away, but we've had other city managers, and other cities have had city managers that have come in, and they've taken it, anybody that's weighed, worked through weight in whatever check they're gonna get, can be very quick to learn. City managers, council members, come and go, that's the nature of the beast. Tell me where you have, we used to have city managers that stayed here for a decade or more, but I understand, it's, the environment and Livingston is not unique, look at our nearby cities, they've also gone through administration changes. It's just the environment and, and like we said, everybody has a chance to apply, anybody in the audience can apply when it comes up, any other city managers, there are always, yes, there are a lot of openings for city managers, but those positions are also getting filled, there's a lot of retirees, or some people just say, you know what, I don't wanna manage a big city, either they just go to a smaller city, I'm in my latter years, I just wanna go and just sit in my little cubby hole and make things good for the smaller first community. There are a lot of good city managers out there, and, and it's always possible we can get good city managers, so I still think we need to move forward, thank you.
Anything's a possibility, true, but if we're gonna just go out there and select anybody from the general public, we may as well just stuck with people that were allowing the city to not grow in the past almost three decades. So we've had a change in leadership that has given us a good direction, and so what has been happening over nearly three decades is the lack of growth, the lack of planning, and that's due to the management of, and that happens in many cities, so yes, that's why city managers don't last, if they're not doing the job, and again, we're not picking people off the street, and again, we're not, I'm looking towards a city manager that's gonna help us grow safely, at least help us grow in the ways that our public wants, not the way that it has been, we've been stagnant, Gar Paul, and you know it.
Mr. Mayor, are we still gonna, would you please go off to public, I think we've had enough discussion?
Yes, actually, and then I do have a question, but I'll save the question when I come back from public comment, is there anyone on the phone with public comment in regards to this item? Here in, I'm coming back to the chamber at eight thirty-four, is there anyone in the chamber in regards to this item?
Yeah, good evening, yeah, I mean, this is the, the main play we run in football. Good evening, everyone, Jipjit, don't know much about this process, picking up as much as I can, since we've been talking about it here. Biggest comment I'll probably make is that, see, it sounds like a lot of money has already been spent, I think you mentioned thirty thousand was the number, and I heard, Mr. Roy, you've been doing work, too, I hear that you're an expensive man, and so, not happy to see that we've put money into this, and now I might be walking back. Few months back, or a couple months back, when this first came up, I asked if this was standard procedure, and you had told me yes, and it seemed like there was consensus agreement there, this is, this is standard procedure, and if that's the case, I'd like to see us move forward on this. It's been mentioned that if Mr. Chris would like to reapply, he can, but in terms of all the uncertainty about whether or not somebody might wanna apply, or what this looks like, I think we should also be thinking about what this conversation looks like just from his chair as it is, does he even wanna reapply? You know, I don't know what the situation is in the city, or just listening to these conversations, I don't know the history of the past the way you do, but if I was a city manager that'd wanna apply, I'd be listening to this conversation right now, too, and putting myself in his chair. And so, just a lot to think about there, I would like to see us get the best candidate no matter what, not in a position to judge your job, I don't know enough about it, from what I've seen in a handful of months, I like, but again, I don't know, everything that goes into running the city, so I'll leave that to you all, but I don't like that, there's a lot of money that's been spent, there's a potential of walking back, so I'd like to see us just move forward, and if council changes, let the next council decide, but I'd like to see you do what you can while you're in the chair, and just make the best decision possible, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen comments in the chamber? See, now I'm bringing it back to the dais at eight thirty-six. So in the past, even, you know, and, and, and there's nothing wrong with going back, actually, this council and other councils have made actually decisions, have gone through the process, they voted and approved, and councils have gone back and rescinded their decisions, so it's just part of the process, and I think that we wouldn't be doing things right if we were not having this conversation and bringing additional information to the table, and I think all of that information, and any additional information, it's always best, to make sure that whatever the final decision that we make is, is the best possible decision, based on the additional information that we have. I think that by not doing that, then we wouldn't be doing our due diligence, and so it's, yeah, it's, might not seem normal, but it's, it's, I mean, that's, it's happened in the past, and there's nothing, I don't see nothing wrong with it. So actually, the question that, you know, just after listening to the different comments was, I think last time, when we made a decision moving forward, it was only four of us here, now we do have five, and, and so, before I ask for a motion, I wanted to ask, ask the question, would this council consider, or would the majority of this council consider a motion to, to remove this item and to appoint Mr. Lopez as a full-time city manager? This is my question to the entire council.
No.
Thank you for your comment.
I would be a yes.
No.
No, I like the idea of it going out, Mr. Lopez, he's gonna have a great application or reference because of what he's done here, but we've worked on it so much, I don't wanna put it down, I'd like to see the other candidates, if I'm still on it, when they finally get near to that selection, so I would vote no on that.
All right, so with that said, are there any additional questions, comments, motions?
Mr. Mayor, I made the motion that we adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a professional service agreement with Bob Murray and Associates for the executive recruitment services for the new permanent city manager.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor by Mayor Protam Samra, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, so we have a second by Mr. Wallace, roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Soto?
No.
Mayor Protam Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four-one.
All right, thank you, so next we have a few more items, but I do have to excuse myself at this time, so I will ask Mayor Protam to please take over the meeting, for me, please.
Item number six?
Yes.
Okay.
So, give me a minute, everyone have a good night.
Can you say you have a conflict?
No, I'm removing myself from the meeting, I'm leaving.
Oh.
I have to leave.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I thought you had a conflict, I was wondering for what.
I'll leave my pen.
I actually have my own pen. Okay, we're going on to discussion and potential act items, this is the item number six, discussion and direction regarding economic development, Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor Protam, so this item was discussed by Councilmember Roth and Mayor Moran, they have identified two opportunities for the city of Livingston, the first one is participation in the ICSC potential attendance, as well as obtaining leakage reports on opportunities for future economic development opportunities for the city of Livingston. We are seeking direction on whether the council would like to have staff identify the potential costs for both of these items, and then gather additional information based on what the council seeks, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, this item, I wanna start out with, councilmembers, any comments? Mr. Roth?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protam, Christopher and I talked about this when we went to Washington, DC, and just for the growth of our city, I think it's important, and I've heard a lot of citizen comments, you know, out and about when I was running for the seat, and even before that, about having sit-down restaurants in our community, I've also talked to a couple land developers about it, and I think it's important for our city to have something like that. My family and I like to go out and meet my wife and I, I'd rather spend my money here in our city, you know, we need, you know, I don't care if it's an Applebee's, or what have you, but we need something here, and that's something I'd, I'd really like to explore and get this going, so, thank you.
Mr. Wallace?
Thank you. Couple months ago, I left my business card at the old Motel Six, which is now a Best Western.
Change.
Stay assured, change, and I left my planning commissioner business card with him, well, the owner is a Mr. Patel Tushar, and I had a long conversation with him, and he's looking for a lot of things, he'd like to see a convention area center, a city swimming pool, indoor, outdoor, he mentioned a bear lodges, he has some nice ideas, but he put a lot of money into it, taking the Motel Six and bringing it up to Best Western standards, so now he's trying to attract that different clientele, and it's just, how much money can he spend now, and how soon can he get in, and then I hit him up with, because he didn't know who I was, other than on the planning commission, and I asked him about his freeway sign, and he said, yep, but it was gonna be probably a couple hundred thousand, he didn't, not sure he wants to invest that right now, there's other things he thought more important, but he's looking at something that would draw people, he mentioned IHOP, right there, maybe in that lot right in front of him, and I said, oh, okay, I was just curious, and we left it at that, but he was very interested in developing his hotel motel, and developing and help develop and move Livingston along, and I think that's somebody we need to get the planning director or whatever, just reach out to him and say hi, and go from there. Thank you.
Councilmember Soto?
So yes, I, I believe this, this item is, has been kicked around for several, several years, it's been at our general plan meetings, where people have come, residents have come, and wanted certain businesses within our town, again, I am one for developing the downtown district, drawing more people, here, again, Rite Aid is there, our community, our court theater is not, so those were some, losing some of our treasures really did our downtown some bad ways, so coming back to providing business opportunities to our locals with small business, again, because I'm part of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, I'm, of course, I'm going to be advocating for some small businesses, but up and around, I mean, we're developing, we're wanting to develop all the industrial businesses out there, which, you know, okay, but it's not what our residents have discussed over the years that I have been here, and I know that it's something that, when I became a council member, I saw this as an opportunity to get some small businesses and beautify our downtown, and make it a walkable community to come to the downtown, yet there is not anything that our residents can truly enjoy to walk down to the downtown, too. So, I want to be able to have those conversations and actually put things into place, but there are so many- but there are so many parts to this that we have yet to take care of. Of course, we need to have our eye focused on bringing those types of businesses that our residents want. I do, I want a twenty-four hour restaurant. I want places because our options, um, are very limited. And I know that there has been studies that show that, uh, and I forget what study it was, but we spent a lot of money on it. But our residents go out of town, we have to. And oftentimes, when I look at the check warrants, I'm looking at, you know, we do, we, we, we frequent Kilmarnock perhaps, you know, because True Value doesn't have something that we need at the point. We're going to another tire shop when we do have one here locally. So again, we ourselves as a city are utilizing other businesses to take care of some of our city vehicles because sometimes we just don't have a choice. And our residents don't have that choice either, but they want those choices. Everybody wants those choices. We want a better Livingston for the future and we can't grow that by just developing on the, on the outside of larger commercial types. So supporting some of these smaller businesses that wanna come in, the little shops that I look forward to when I go to other towns. You know, Ripon has like this awesome ice cream shop that, you know, I mean, we have, uh, La Tiendita over here, we have Rite Aid. They serve ice cream, you know, but it's not the same, the atmosphere, the ambiance is just not the same. So having different people come to the table and I know that there are conferences that many of our council people have gone to where they do this. They go and they bring back the information, let's develop this, we need these ideas, do this and do this, and it just never comes to be. So having part of those other aspects that need to be taken care of, our water, cause again, some of our businesses, we're having to say, look, we just can't take you on right now, cause we gotta resolve this issue over here. Oh yeah, that doesn't fit over here because that's not part of our general plan. We can't do this right over here because where you wanna develop, that's not part of Livingston. So there are many things that we need to take care of in order for these things to happen. It's, it's just all part of this cycle. But we do want, I, I do want these opportunities, they need to be here. Our residents want it. All of us deserve better than what we can offer, what we're offering our, our community right now. I want a thriving community where people can shop in our downtown. We don't necessarily have to go outside of town to buy our, our home goods, our groceries. Again, we, we can't please everybody, but we can do something about the future growth of Livingston. We just have to take care of some, some other items that fall into place. And these are conversations that have been long before I came onto council. So put these down, put them into a plan, that's what we need. We need actually, and I know when Chris, Mr. Lopez first came on board, he wanted to sit down with each and every one of us and say, let's do some goal setting. And here we are at the end of, I don't know, like you said, some of us are, are gonna be leaving our seats. But here we are. I've, I feel that this, this needed to be done, this should have been on agenda every single time cause we've forgotten it. We've forgotten what our people want, what they've asked for.
Uh, thank you. Uh, this item is now open to the public. Does anybody on the phone wish to comment on this item? I don't hear anybody on the phone. This item is now open to the, uh, chambers. Anybody wish to come forward?
Yeah, thank you, Jupjit. I'm not a hundred percent sure what this would look like in the sense of like tangibly moving forward. I'll leave that to you all and city staff who know what this would look like, but just hearing comments about things that could come out of this, like restaurants and shops. The one thing that I would say is if we do develop downtown or just the city as a whole at some point, obviously it would be nice to have some bigger chains that wanna come here cause all, they're big chains for a reason, people go to them a lot. But I really wanna bring up, I went to UC Merced, so I spent a lot of time in Merced. Um, and Mission Avenue, I'm not sure if you guys know the area, one of the last acts of Merced is being developed. Right now they're getting a lot of new stuff there. You see development, it's like, oh, I wonder what's gonna be there. And then you see a McDonald's pop up, you know, and it's like, we don't need more McDonald's. And not only is it terrible for you objectively, but we have McDonald's everywhere and like, I, I really hope it's not stuff that we already have access to cause people are willing to make that fifteen, twenty-minute drive if they need to. You know, if we want stuff, if we wanna keep people in Livingston, I feel like it should also be things that are only in Livingston, like those small shops you talked about, like an ice cream shop in Ripon, that's dope, you know? I don't wanna see something like that if I went to Ripon. Um, I was talking to a member of the community a couple of weeks back, just asking them about things that they like to see. Um, just cause as I get more and more involved, I wanna figure out what people are looking at. And they had told me, um, the train, high speed will come through Livingston at some point when it's developed. And, and the frame of thinking really should be if you are coming from somewhere that's not in Livingston and you don't know anything about Livingston and you stop here, what do you wanna see, you know? And if I'm somebody that's coming into our city, I wanna see something that's only in our city, run by people in our city, for our city. You know, food quality from your, your family-owned restaurants and your small shops, those nice little things, like it's really cool to go out and see that stuff. We're small, we can only have so much of it, but I really hope we can maximize that end of it rather than bringing our bigger businesses, our Applebee's, Buffalo Wild Wings, whatever. It would be really nice to have a bar or something like that, you know? I'm not saying none of it, but I really would like for the focus to be on small shops, family-owned businesses, things that people run because I think the quality and, um, the environment would be a lot better. So I'm not sure how we get there. Again, I'll leave that to you all, I'm sorry that I can't provide anything on that, but speaking for a lot of people in the community too, I think they'd like to see that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, that is a great point, um, that you share with us.
Anybody else from the public?
Uh, Deo Castillo, resident and, uh, real estate developer. I'll just give you some feedback. I, I, I think I, I mentioned to most of you guys here, uh, the concern and, not concern, but the difficult, difficulty of getting projects done in Livingston and some of the other cities. It's just how long it takes to get stuff done. I've had a project for veteran housing, I've been working on two and a half years and I've had two pathways to it, how to get there. I'm still, now I'm, I'm on my third one, so. All the, all these ideas you guys want are great, but I think from, from council, you guys need to ha- have leadership, have a system in place of how you're gonna, how you guys are gonna be, be able to make these projects go through, you know, uh, with the most streamlined or faster project, uh, process, cause it seems like, yeah, we want this, but then we'll go back and say, I, I have projects right now, I'll go and ask and they get stopped at the, at the window, no, we can't do it cause we don't have any water, or no, we can't do it because of the zoning, or no, we can't do it because it requires X, Y, and Z. And the path that we have, I feel, with the city of Livingston compared to some of the other cities, it's, it's a very, it's a, it's not that we can't do it, it just takes two times, three times the time and it's very not cost efficient. I, I have, like the VA project, and I can, I'll use that as an example today. Uh, I get, I, I've discussed it with, with cities north and south of us. All of them would have it approved within six months and I'm on two and a half years on that project. So I just say like, it's great, you guys want development, but like streamline the process and make sure the people in, in your team are, are, or have a game plan of how we're gonna, how you guys are gonna be able to bring development in. Because if you guys wanna, let's say you go spend all this money on, on, uh, attracting new business, but if we don't have waters, if we don't have the zoning in place, if you guys don't have a, a code that allows to make amendments, um, uh, and, and something that could be done within a couple of weeks or months and, and not years, then I don't know that you guys are gonna get anywhere. And then as far as the local business, as a business owner myself, and I've been here for over, uh, a decade, we, we need to educate, or not educate, but we need to let the residents know that if they want the ice cream shops, if they want the small businesses, you gotta support small business. Because the reason Ripon does good, the reason Turlock does good is because the residents support it. And so, and so do people from other communities. So you can, you know, you gotta, if you gotta open up a business, you gotta get a lease, you gotta do the store, I mean, there's a lot of costs to go involved. So if we want these things, we need to support, you know, local business for that work. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? If not, this item is now closed to public. For me, uh, Mr. Castillo made a good comment and I think, uh, our city manager can attest that I have raised similar concerns with him and I know he's been working to streamline some processes. Thank you, Mr. Chris. We had a opportunity a couple of times where I went to a retail conference in Las Vegas. And I won't mention some of the photos that got published in the paper, but that's a different story. They were all good photos, okay? Anyway, uh, those were good conferences go-to. I know that we go to One Voice, it's an excellent program, we should continue to support it, we do that. But I felt that the few times that we did attend the, uh, retail conferences, I believe we had a better return on the resources and time spent. Through them, I know it didn't go in the end because the property owners and the businesses couldn't come to some sort of an agreement to bring in. Uh, there were, uh, dollar stores and others that, they talked about it. We met the people that did the, the Motel Six through some of these conferences. You know, we met them even after they were in construction. These, uh, investors and these companies were there. That's a good place to be. And Mr. Castillo is absolutely correct in saying that if we're gonna work on that, we also need to, within ourselves in the city, streamline our process. We do need to streamline our process because a person coming in doesn't know exactly what's expected. The, when they start filing the applications, it's almost like a learn-as-you-go process a lot, sometimes. You know, I've, and I, and we need to, and the staff needs to, is get together and say, why do some of these simple things take so long? I'm not gonna state some of the concerns that are raised to Mr. Lopez, he's very well aware of it. But some of those processes shouldn't take as long as they did. And some of them are still hung up. And I'm not referring to your project because, but there was other projects that fell on a similar line. Things are so simple that should be almost like a bench warrant, you know? Hey, it's a simple little thing, you know, we can do this. Running through city management, everybody, and it needs to move forward because not everything requires, you know, sequels and EIRs and general plan amendment. Not everything requires that, there's some projects that do require, of course. If you're not in the city, pre-zoning application, I get it. If you're just already here and all you wanna do is remodel your home or, you know, it shouldn't take a year, six months. It should be, okay, here it is, here's the paperwork. Somebody comes in and says, here's what you need to do. Here's our procedure, you wanna do this, fill this out, here's the steps. Not only the, the applicant should be responsible for doing A through Z and one, two, three, city should also be held to the same standard and say, why didn't we do things in a timely manner either? We need to do that. So there is that issue we need to work on. However, part of this, and I do, and I, we did this in the past where we aim and get data and say, what can we do, what can we do to recruit? You know, we need to, we need to get that. I'm wholeheartedly in agreement that we should give some sort of a direction to staff and says, formulate a plan for us, see if we have some people that wanna attend some of these, uh, conferences, get with the business community here and say, tell us where are we falling, uh, falling at? There are, cause businesses here, they're frustrated too. That nothing should take this long for simple stuff. Uh, so along with this, I would like to ask, uh, Mr. Lopez to, when we go to get data, also work with our own staff, your staff, in saying, where are these things, why is it taking so long or what? What can we do to streamline the process? I'm not saying allow things that are not to code or, you know, but there's always a lot of delays. To hear applicants say, I've been trying emailing the city for months, getting no response, is not okay. That's a delay. None of us would want to put that kind of money in and have it sit there and pay interest or loans on something you already put the money out, but you're not getting your return on it. And, and also shop local. You know, uh, I can't even begin to tell you the number of times I go to Vias, you know? Sometimes, you know, hey, you know, why should I drive out of town? You know, it's down the street. Or why do I need to go to Baskin Robbins when we got somebody? We may not have thirty-one flavors, but of the thirty-one flavors, thirty of them, I don't even know what the heck they are because I still stick with the old vanilla one anyway, you know? So, so I mean, we do have a lot of people and we support our business and we get with the business and Mr. Lopez, perhaps you can get with the business and say, where are, are, how can we improve the process? And that needs to be done as well. And so at this point, are you looking for, uh, Mr. Lopez, are you looking for some sort of, what do, what direction are you looking for at this point here?
Uh, Mayor Protem, two items on the agenda that are listed. Um, reviewing the potential of going to ICSC and then two, identification of any sort of economic development leakage reports. Those are the two items that were
Yeah.
Agendized, Mayor Protem.
So I, I get that as far as the leakage report, you would have to, and, yeah, we definitely need to. We did that in the past in saying, why do we have a leakage? Because I think ninety percent or more are driving to Turlock at water. It sends me, and I'm just as guilty sometimes, that I'm at a store and I see fellow Livingstonians. In fact, uh, and I, I did this because I was trying to help out my daughter because they're playing Monopoly cards at Say Mart. I walk in and the guy goes, hey, it's the mayor of Livingston. I said, no, I'm not, I'm here because I wanna show, appreciate what we have in Livingston. I just wanna, uh, experience the worst people, you know, than what we have, you know? We have the best, I just wanna know the best. So we do have that, I see a lot of our people there. And we need to find out what services are they lacking. We know what they're lacking, how do we work on that and getting this? So retail leakage also needs to be studied. And also, in my view, that we need to, uh, set up some sort of, yeah, find out what our, our other conferences are. The one in Vegas is the largest. I think that's the one we should definitely attend. Just by the sheer size and sheer number of vendors and investors, we should definitely go to some of those and there's, there's others we can definitely research. So, uh, any other first, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lopez, go ahead.
I just wanna make sure that I've got the, at least the council majority that does want to be in that direction so that we do get the information that is requested by the council.
Yeah, and that's exactly what I was about to say. Mr. Roth, uh, further comments?
Nope.
Mr. Wallace? As well as Soto?
Of course.
Of, thank you.
So these studies are, would be beneficial to the city of Livingston. Again, just going out to our residents and to the community as to what they want, but how we can attain it is gonna be a different story. I know that, uh, Protem shared with us, you know, streamlining the process. I know that that is one of the reasons why we have, um, Gary, what's his last name? Conti. You know, um, you know, we have, we have planners, we have, uh, staff that's in, involved in, and looking out for Livingston. Streamlining the process does not mean, however, that we come with a paper to City Hall and say, hey, this has happened in the past, you need to, we need to take care of this. And somebody signs, signs off on it because And somebody signs, signs off on it because that process should be long gone. There are policies and procedures and codes that we need to adhere to. So going through the proper channels, channels is what needs to be done and it needs to be done in all fairness. I know that there are investors, developers that come forward. They may speak to certain parts of staff. And then it comes to other people in a roundabout way and businesses happen. That's not what we're about. And I hope that that message is loud and clear, is that there have been ways that Livingston has been doing things and they may not have been in the best interest of the city because now people are having to wait to ensure that things are done properly and that every part of their project is being looked at. And we have to look that, look at some of these projects with a scrutiny. And I hate to say that, but it is what has happened and it's something that we need to be aware of and that we need to come to a halt to make sure that our people are being treated fairly. Because what, what happens to one business may not happen for another business because somebody has been able to come and say, hey, can you look at this? Can we just look, get this moved forward because we need it to? And that's not what this council is here for. We are to grow and develop in a safe manner. And again, in a, in a way that it's fair for, for everybody that wants to come into Livingston. So yes, development is important. Supporting our locals is very important. Again, I was coming through Merced. I needed an air filter rather than stop at Autozone. I know we have one here in Livingston. But I did go to Napa because Albert has been around for a very long time. So I support his business. It's a little bit more expensive, but you know what? He needs to be, make a living. He's been here for Livingston. He's donated to the community and he's given back. So again, one of the more reasons to support our, our smaller businesses, family-owned businesses. And to the point that the gentleman made about the train coming through, I know that when we found out that it was going to be our stop, I thought about it and said to myself, what exactly are they stopping for? What is in our downtown that these people that are commuting back and forth are gonna get off that train and say, I'm not immediately getting off. I got 30 minutes to blow. Where am I going? So let's envision that type of a downtown for Livingston. What are we going to provide? And again, going to these conferences will provide us with some ideas that we can move forward with, but listening to the, what the community would like. They want your skate parks. They want your, we want court theater back. We want places such as that, that help keep people in Livingston not wanting to just stop here and then go. And we want to earn their money, right? That's, that's how we're going to, I mean, that's the truth of it. We want them to spend their dollars here. We want our residents to spend their dollars here, but we, we just don't have, I don't wanna say we don't have. We do have somewhat of what people need here, but these are choices, again, that, that people are gonna make, our community is going to make unless we don't provide it for them here.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Soto. Mr. Lopez, what is the limit of a contract the city manager can sign as far as dollars before coming to the council?
$10,000.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna kinda make a direction and I'll call to each other, see if they wish to remove or add anything to the direction. So I would like to give direction to staff that we look for these retail conferences and also direct the city manager to commission a retail leakage study. If, I don't know, I don't think it's gonna be under $10,000, but if it is, miracles can happen, to go ahead and immediately commission the study. That way we can save a little time. So I would, I would like to give that direction to work on conferences and, and get the study on retail leakage. Mr. Roth, do you have anything to add or subtract?
No, I'm good with your, your suggestion, but I would also like to piggyback on what Ms. Soto said. You and I both talked about that years ago, our downtown. And I totally agree with the, the train coming in. That is important. What are they, what are they gonna see? What are they gonna spend their money on? Why would they wanna stop? So, yeah, that is important, important and, yeah.
Mr. Wallace, anything to add or subtract?
Yeah, in regards to the train, if they're already on the train, it is gonna be a quick stop. My concern would be, okay, if the train's coming, they're gonna be, have a stop in Livingston. Where are they gonna park? What is there for them to eat while they're waiting for the train, other than in the train station, which we have no design over because that's ACE or whoever it is, they're gonna control how that's designed. But what's for that person who wants to park his car, go to the city for two or three days? What do we have for them right there in that area? We need to be thinking ahead that way in that development area, get some feelers out. That's all.
Soto, anything to add or subtract?
You know, I, I believe I said what I needed to. I am wanting to look into these options to see what is, what people could bring here, what we wanna advocate for. But spending more money on studies that have already been done, going out to our community and just asking them, put a poll out there. If something came, you see it all the time. You see it on the, the community page, like, we wanna fill in the blank here. We already know what our people want. It's just a matter of bringing it here and supporting the ideas and holding the workshops that probably won't cost as much as these, these studies and going out to conferences. I think our, our best bet is to get the words from, from our community because they're the ones that are here. They're the ones that we can serve, rather than spending the money and going and finding people that are just, you know, well, they wanna develop. They wanna develop whoever's gonna take them. And I don't wanna be, just take everybody and everybody that comes. We have a chance to be selective and our community will do its best to select ideas and provide input. And I think that's where we should have our start is, is those, holding that, we've had workshops. We've had studies. Dig 'em up because they probably have not changed.
Okay, thank you. And to Mr. Wallace regarding the ACE train, there was some discussion and I know that sometimes things take a long time. It was, what can we do and where would we put the ACE train stop? It was suggested, and I'm not saying that it was any decisions made by some, is to have a welcome center showcasing what we have in Livingston as far as, you know, what we have as far as what we produce here, farm-based stuff, to showcase what we have, some of our business. That's what was suggested, a welcome center. So that, so but, that was a discussion that was done years ago. I don't think, I don't think that might really have changed, but, but I think the property owners would probably agree with that as well. We would have to, you know, work on it and there's some money we can allocate towards it. But those were some of the, just simple discussion, nothing in writing, but welcome centers and now that what we wanna offer. So when they do get off or they're waiting, maybe somebody to get off the train and say, hey, you know what? Let me go check out, you know, they got cheese here or we got sweet potatoes or whatever we have, you know, to showcase what we have. That's just an idea and of course, there can be other things were done. Those were kinda things were suggested. So with that said, Mr. Lopez, do you, by the majority of the council, do you have direction?
Well, I would like, for the record, I see Councilmember Roth nodding his head.
Mr. Wallace?
Councilmember Wallace.
Like I said, I'm not totally against it because I do want to know about future development. But again, we can get that just by staying here locally and helping to support our local businesses, our, our pop-ups to get them storefronts.
Thank you. And the, the retail study, what I was saying to, for Mr. Lopez to work with, doesn't mean he has to commission any studies. If there's some more studies that we can look into, they can be brought forward as well. So it doesn't mean it's new money. It's just saying that we can do that. So, okay, Mr. Lopez?
And just for the record, two items that are being directed. Retail leakage study, if it's below my signing authority, get that scored away. And then the second item is identification of the ICSCI conference costs.
And if it's above the authority, of course, bring it for the studies or whatever you need at the future meeting.
Yes, and for the record, all four council members in agreement.
Are you in agreement?
I support the idea, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But not spending the money.
Okay, well, you have three, so, okay. Okay, all right.
If I may, can we take a?
Sure, we will take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, come on, let's get back in session. Oh, Martin. The clerk is here, Doc. The clerk is there. Okay. At 9:21, we're back in session. Item number eight, this is a council direction for Main Street banner permits and installation policy. Mr. Lopez?
Jackie, would you like to present this item?
That'll teach you to stay, Jackie.
Can I just, for you? Okay. So since we've had the two new poles put in downtown, we do have people requesting to put their banners up. We have no rules in place on who can put them up there, how long they stay up there, and the fee because it's not where somebody can just put a banner up. You know, they can't shimmy up the pole. We gotta have the boom truck come out. You need to have a spotter as well as the person installing. And talking with Public Works, it takes a little over an hour to install a banner on one of our street poles. So we are seeking direction on how you would like to handle that. Would you like to direct staff to, you know, put together a suggestion to bring back to you? Do you already have ideas? Because by not having any kind of rules in place, what we do for one, we would need to do for another. So, you know, can just any business come in and do whatever they want? Do we limit the use of those, the banners to local nonprofits as well as our, of course, our own programs?
Thank you, Jackie. And I will add a couple of things here too. The council may have certain policy things that the council may want to address. For instance, probably wants to have some sort of parameters on what types of things can be advertised. For instance, you probably don't wanna have certain, maybe sensitive things advertised on these banners. You probably wanna have requirements on the types of banner that it could be, the length of time that it could be up for. If the council does wanna entertain this, you know, Public Works has limited amount of staff, so there is an offset depending on how much usage there is of Public Works items that aren't gonna get completed because of this. We would always recommend a policy be done just because it provides some clarity as to the types of things that can be put on those banners and then also just, you know, if any fees are related to that. So it's a good practice to have a policy in place. Many of the things here in Livingston don't have a policy, so it's a lot of just, well, we've done it before. So this would help get the city of Livingston towards a path of just policies in place, good procedures in place so that when an applicant comes in and does request this, that we're being uniform and we're treating everybody equally across the board. I think those are the main things there. If the council did direct it, we would probably look at other agencies and identify draft policies, have the city attorney draft them, bring them back to the council for consideration, potential adoption in the future. A question did come up yesterday from Councilmember Wallace and it was along the lines of, well, why don't you just develop the policy? And obviously, without getting council direction, we didn't wanna expend city attorney resources or bog down staff with doing something the council didn't necessarily want to do. So that's the reason why it is before council. We wanna get formal council direction from the council on what it would like to do on this matter. Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Mr. Wallace, your thought?
Thank you. It would have just been a couple of questions and a couple of things I think we would have to consider. Number one, it should be for a 501(c) charitable organization. Then the next question that would come up to my mind... Then the next question that would come up to my mind, you want to limit it to Livingston? Or is it maybe a 501 charity that's in Delhi that wants to advertise? That would be something that needs to be considered also. And then the timeframe, I said a month prior to the, whatever they're advertising, it has to be down within seventy-two hours, because I'm assuming that would give Public Works two or three days to get it down. We don't want it, you know, I don't think we need it up three months for. But you were the expert, how often do you, when do you start advertising the Sweet Potato Festival?
So we do have an ordinance for temporary signs in place, which we try to follow, and that would be forty-five days. So you will see here real soon, within the next couple of weeks, Sweet Potato going up, and then trying to get it down, you know, within a few days after the event. I know that if whatever we put in our, on our permit process, it would be scheduled to come down at the same time it would be scheduled to go up. So Public Works would know, you know, thirty or forty-five days, whatever you guys put on the time limit, for those banners to go up when it would come up, or when it would come down.
Okay, yeah, that was just some of the first questions that hit my, because we don't have a cost. And, you know, Public Works should be able, if you say in an hour to put it up, it's going to take an hour to get it down. So it's two hours for Public Works, I'm assuming? And then what would that cost be if we allow the city to incur it? Or is that going to be one of, maybe it's the, whoever wants that banner up, they got to cover that cost?
And that would be a decision?
Yep, that's, yeah, that's some of the items that, when I first read this, that I came up with, that need to be discussed. Thank you. Thank you, Jackie, unless somebody else has more questions for you.
Councilmember Soto? No, I always, I never call, I always switch everybody. So you're next.
So, yes, some of the comments that I'd like to make, I would like to see the applicant, if there's an application procedure, cover that cost of advertising. I'd also want to see what other cities are doing, because I know the city of Merced has a policy in place. So if there, if we could look to see what other cities are doing, sort of like an outline of who they accept, who can, resident, non-resident, what their free structures look like, just their rules for allowing signs up, that people that already have these things in place. I think that that would probably be about it. So once, if we could look at somebody, a model of it, then we could, we can adjust ours to fit the needs of Livingston.
Mr. Roth?
Thank you. I have no problem doing the nonprofit or having other, say, Delhi or whatever, water advertise here within limits. I would say that cost analysis, things like that, we'd have to do the research, like Christopher said, go out and find like a plan of what other cities are doing for it. But I have no problem with what is suggested on here. But I think we should basically limit for our nonprofits, maybe the high school, and our local businesses. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. For me, I agree, if it needs to be non-political, can be supporting causes for anything. I'm not talking, I'm talking, cannot be anything to do with the elections or measures, nothing like that. And it should, if we allow, first of all, I think it needs to be limited to our local organizations. If the council wishes to allow others outside of the city, then the preference needs to be given, if there's a conflict in time, to our local organizations first. And there also should be the time, how long can they put up that banner? It needs to be, you know, somebody might want to advertise something, but we're not gonna, you know, there needs to be timeframes, preference to our local people, non-political is what I have. And of course, what does it take for someone to put that time in, because it needs to be reimbursed?
Another point that needs to be addressed is that our number-one competitor is going to be our own city. Because if we're going to advertise for the Sweet Potato Festival, the Fourth of July Festival, and everything else that's coming up that also follow like a seasonal pattern, many of these other activities that our organizations that want to put up a banner, we're going to run into that conflict. So we're going to have to put something in places. Who gets to choose what sign goes up and at what time? Because that is going to be a conflict. Because if someone wants to put up a very valuable message to the city of Livingston, however, there is already a sign in place that is going to take up that allotment of time. Did you say forty-five days? So a month and a half, and that maybe perhaps their event is already going to be over. So again, there has to be a deciding factor of a conflict, and our biggest competitor is going to be ourselves.
Yeah, well, then I think the preference should be city events first, other nonprofits second. And after that, it'll be first come, first served. If a Prophet A wants to put something up, and Prophet B already requested it, and we got a, you know, was given, well, Prophet A, well, sorry, but they've already there. So, you know, if their event passes, well, sorry, you know, but it needs to be that way, so.
Again, I'm going to play devil's advocate here. Sweet Potato Festival is going to land the same time as the All Alumni. So do we choose an alma mater?
Well?
Well, we do have two places for two banners. So we have not ever had anything up on both at the same time. But it's always good to prepare in the event, and that's why we're bringing this forward.
Are you saying double-sided, or are you saying at this end?
We have one at D, and we have one at the railroad tracks, or right before you get to?
The Fiesta?
Two, yes, yeah. Postmarket.
Yes, well, okay, either way, we know what's at. So, I mean?
So that, so that is an option. Leave city, one up at one point in Livingston, another entry point into Livingston.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, this item is open to the public. Anybody on the phone? See, no one calling on the phone? Anybody in the audience? See, no one. Public comment is not closed. Council, any further discussion? No? And then, Mr. Lopez, do you have clear enough direction?
So I'm looking for formal direction on whether the council would like? Sorry, I'm looking for formal direction on whether the council would like us to return back with a draft policy based on the feedback we received tonight.
I would like to see a draft policy come back to the council for further discussion and approval.
And then also, too, what is included in the recommendation is to identify the potential cost for that and potential fee recovery associated with that.
That is correct.
Thank you. And then just for the record?
Is everybody in concurrence?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
For the record, everybody's in.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Okay, next item, this is a resident city of Livingston authorizing the interim city manager to execute MOU with Merced County for stopgap funding in the amount of not to exceed ninety thousand. Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So on, let's see, when it was? On April sixteenth, it looks like the council had a discussion related to two proposals that were provided to the county CEO's office. One of them was a stopgap funding measure to fund additional staffing at our station via overtime. The council approved that direction and directed staff to work on an agreement with the county of Merced. In addition to that, the council also provided direction on determining whether there was interest from the county for a longer-term agreement in the event that the city did not get the SAFER grant. Based on the conversations since then with the county, the county has developed a stopgap funding agreement. The agreement would provide additional staffing at Station Ninety-Six on a basis, at a two-o level basis, which would be funded via overtime. The agreement, as attached, is a potential three-month agreement. It will go into effect once the county board of supervisors adopts the potential agreement. And so it's a maximum cost of thirty thousand dollars per month. Detail of the agreement does state that we will be provided line item detail with respect to the personnel expenses, so that we can ensure that we've got an idea of the personnel and who's staffing Station Ninety-Six. That concludes my report. Mayor Protem, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Miss Soto?
My only question was, where are we, do we have any indication of where they are with the grant process?
I do not have an update on that.
Mr. Roth?
Yes, thank you. As for me, you all know what community knows. Everyone up here on the dais knows public safety. Our fire department, police department is very important to this community. I think it's pertinent that we have this taken care of in case we don't get the SAFER grant. From being in Washington, advocating for the SAFER grant with the county, I thought we would hear something by now, but unfortunately, we have not. So let's cross our fingers and hope we get an answer by the end of the month. But, yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yeah, just one quick question on the SAFER grant. I know the first year was a hundred percent, but what does it go down to on year two and three? Do we have an exact answer?
Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, city staff. My name is Justin Chaplin. I'm our local training chief from Merced County Fire Department, covering all of our opportunities in our areas within the Merced Division. Specific to the SAFER grant, on the timeframe and timetable, you should be expecting an answer one way or another, sometime in late August, potentially in the late September. It's definitely a range of time. We have no control with that. It's just the way that the process works. Councilmember Wallace, your question, specific to the timeframe of the phase-in on the years, I can't give you a in-depth, with good conscious, answer to that, as I'm not exclusive privy to that. I know general, at large, how the operation works. Our subject matter expert for that is currently covering my battalion coverage, so I can be present here today. But that is information that we can follow back with and ensure that that's made available to both city manager and the city staff, council.
Thank you. Okay, anything else, council? For me, I think it's a three-year grant. The first year is a hundred percent, and then it dwindles down from there. I'm not sure of the exact numbers either. I had them, but I don't want to be quoted wrongly, you know? To me, there is a couple of things that the residents always ask me for. When are we going to get better water? And second, are you going to keep the station open? And I told them, water takes, it's going to take a while, but we're going to do everything darnest to make sure that Ninety-Six stays open here. And I made my commitment to it. I'm going to do everything I can come November. Before that, I'm going to go door-to-door, whatever it takes. I want to make sure that our citizens are aware of what we are asking and reassure them. Because public safety, I think there is, we may all disagree on a lot of things, but nobody on this dais will disagree on anything to do with public safety. We will all agree that we got to make sure that we have the best. We do have the very good, well, good police department. Ninety-Six is one of the most busiest, but they are also very responsive. And we have some of the best volunteers out there. We want to make sure that we continue to provide that level of service to our residents. So just want to make sure of that. At this time, we'll, please, go ahead.
Thank you again. Just to be forthcoming with information, the partner I referenced earlier, who's currently maintaining my battalion coverage, he's watching. So he's also the author of our SAFER grant, one hundred percent for the three years.
Okay, well, okay, I thought there was dwindling, but I guess, that's even, that's even better. But, you know, and there'll be further discussions, you know, hopefully, the residents, I know they see it, and hopefully, they will understand and vote to support. You know, so I hope that happens. At this moment, I will open this up to anybody on the phone, wish to comment on this item? I don't hear anybody calling on the phone. Anybody in the audience?
Yeah, Jibjit, question, when will this money kick in? So when will we start spending the money? Is this as of October first? Like, when does that three-month period start?
It would kick in once the board of supervisors approves this agreement, and they can get the staffing allocated to the station.
So we need, so from my understanding, if, so let's say they approve the next month. So we need money to support the station now? It's not just after? It would be close, like there's money needed before that period as well?
So let me provide a little bit of background. Prior to the county taking action on the closure of Station Ninety-Six, they had initially had a conversation about closing it on July one. In the conversations, I think that was an April conversation, my recommendation to the county was that they not close it July one, and we at least leave the station open until we hear back from the SAFER grant folks. So that was the initial idea with B.C. Chaplin, as well as other leadership from Cal Fire, to develop this idea. Subsequent to that, we provided this proposal to the county CEO's office, and then they decided if they did close Station Ninety-Six, and the city didn't, or the county didn't receive the SAFER grant, that the station would be closed effective October one. So from the period of now or until we hear back from the SAFER grant, this would up the staffing at Station Ninety-Six to two-o, with funding that's already been allocated in the city's budget.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? If not, this item is now closed to the public. Council, any further discussion or motion?
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
I have a motion by Councilmember Soto. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Signed by Councilmember Roth. May I have roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Semra?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four-one, four-zero.
Thank you. And the item number nine. This is a discussion to make city council appointment to city boards and commissions. This is a, I believe we had a vacancy, and it was filled, but we still need to appoint people or somebody to those groups. So currently, those appointments were vacated by Councilmember Mann, and appointed, we have reappointment by Mr. Wallace. So any further discussion, council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a quick question on this one. Mr. Wallace has expressed that he would like to have the planning commission, and I would like to take the recreation commission, if that's all right.
So you want to split parks and recreation? I'm sorry, repeat that again?
I would like to take recreation. Mr. Wallace would like to take planning, if that's possible.
Who's on the planning now?
It's him. It's Mr. Roth.
You're on planning, but that hasn't changed, right?
No, he wants to flip it.
Oh, you want to flip it? Oh, got it, okay. You confused the heck out of me. I knew you were there, and I'm like, sorry about that. It must be close to ten o'clock. And, and as far as the integrated regional?
I have no problem with.
Well, you know?
I can, will accept.
You will humbly accept any other discussion? Okay, okay, this item is now open to the.
Okay, this item is now open to the public. Anybody on the phone? No? Anybody in the public audience? No, it's closed. Counsel, further discussion? Well, Mr. Wallace, you know, you came forward and talked about the A's and shows that you are tuned to a lot of things. You're about to get in trouble here. You're going to get appointed here. So, okay, at this time, does anybody want to make the appointment and the motion?
I'll make the motion to appoint Mr. Roth to the Parks and Recreation Commission, so that Mr. Wallace may be the city council liaison to the planning. And item B, to make the appointment for Mr. Wallace to be the Merced Integrated Regional Water Management Plan representative.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilwoman Soto. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Soto?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four-zero.
Counsel, any future items on the agenda requested? Any further discussion?
I'd like to have for discussion to review or extend a contract, as I know it was only just for this year, for Paul Mauer Show. If we can have that discussion, or did we? What was the contract for this year? So, that way, we can look at planning for the future.
Okay. Would you like to have that at the next meeting, or have them...
Right away, so that way we can...
Mr. Lopez, do you see any scheduling issues?
We were planning on having a Fourth of July report back at the next council meeting, so that's what we're planning on doing, and I'm sure that can be part of the discussion.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, you have your, can you please bring forward at the next meeting? And any further discussion? If not, at nine fifty, forty-eight, we are in German. Thank you. I'll see if my pen stays there.